Would you call the roll, please?
David Burris.
Here.
JR Huddleston.
Here.
Deborah Johnston.
Here.
Phil Lukens.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Craig Romi.
Here.
Linda Varbel.
Here.
Melanie Wilson.
Here.
Thank you.
Could you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and with good reason, and justice for all.
As always, counsel, if you have a conflict of interest, please make a note of it before you vote. Need a motion to approve an amended agenda. The, uh, it's an addition to the executive session. We didn't note what the execs, executive session is for, uh, and it's per South Dakota codified law 1-25-2-3 legal. So again, that's South Dakota codified law 1-25-2-3 legal.
Make a motion to approve the agenda, the amended agenda, including executive session 1-25-2-3 legal.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion to approve the minutes from the April 4th meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the April 4th council meeting.
Second.
Discussion. Craig.
Thank you.
And Deborah.
Thank you.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion to approve the bills in between?
Make a motion to approve bills in between for $182,494.61.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion to approve the current claims.
I make a motion to approve the current claims of $290,992.64.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to address the council?
Excuse me? Don't we have two sets of bills? We only did one, didn't we?
No?
Well, I have a couple of questions in this one. I'm sorry. I was reading and I...
Too late.
I got a couple of questions. Can we go back?
Which one?
Current claims or?
Yeah, the current claims.
What page?
Page four. First one.
Parker?
No, no. That, that's alarming too, but the holsters. We must have a pile of holsters down that police department because I see holsters on these bills all the time and they don't go with the police officers. It stays off. How come we keep buying holsters? Anybody have an answer? Because I have no clue.
Yeah.
Also, I can tell you...
Here. I encourage counsel when you have these kinds of questions.
He did.
I did.
Asked me and has not been today to answer that question, so I did not get answered yet and I encouraged him to ask if you know.
I don't know specifically. I do know, and I've talked to them, that because of comments that have been brought up before that there seems to be a lot of surplus equipment. They are in the process of identifying and cataloging that surplus equipment so that there can be a proper either reissuing of that equipment or a disposition of that, surplusing of that equipment.
Well, I know, but once Hot Springs bought all the same weapon for everybody, the holster is the same for every weapon.
Yeah, I, I don't know any specifics, Craig, so I can't.
And I guess I need to know what stingers are.
I did look that up after we talked on the invoice and it is a rechargeable flashlight. There are two of them in there and they were $147 a piece. The remaining was the cost of the pullover.
Oh, okay. Page nine. I apologize for this, Mr. Mayor. We seem to making a lot of duplicate keys for the city of Hot Springs. It seems like we have them all the time. Are they not getting them back? Are they losing them? Does anybody have an answer for that? Because I asked Misty and she did not know either.
Do I have an answer for you tonight?
Oh, you don't. Hey, I understand that. Uh, page 10.
Can I clarify? My answer was that we have a key inventory in City Hall for the keys in our possession and each of the departments is responsible for the key inventories. We don't have a very good process for it. We're often reviewing things, so to clarify. I did have an answer. It just didn't answer the specific question for those three keys in the water department.
I apologize.
It's okay.
It's page 12. Why do we need signs for the police department?
With the highway reconstruction that's happening right now, uh, folks are public, the, the public is taking up the limited space that's available in front of the, uh, adjacent to the police department.
Over there in the...
By the...
Sign, okay. Well, that's what Misty and I thought, but you don't, I, hey, that's okay, never mind. That's all I have, sir.
Anyone else? All right, thank you. Communications from the public. Counsel update? Andrew?
I always try to lift this and I never can. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening.
Highlights of the last quarter for Shedco. Marketing. In March, the Governor's Office of Economic Development sent a marketing team out from Sioux Falls to Hot Springs to put together a video showcasing the Hot Springs area. The video will be launched on the GOED website and will be available for Shedco and any other Hot Springs-related websites to place. They captured the downtown area, the school district, library, the Mueller Center, hospital, golf course, Pioneer Museum, Fall River Health Services, the ambulance facility, the state VA, and the Black Hills VA Administration, to name a few. The video also showcases a few of the local businesses in the downtown area and GOED estimates that the video will come out in late summer. So the city, the chamber, anyone who's got the best interest of Hot Springs can, uh, place that video on their website. The ADA project for the Riverwalk. Shedco transferred the funds for the purchase of the two ADA compliant charging stations to the city. The construction of the new shelter adjacent to the Brookside will begin this Friday, April 22nd. Or, I believe, is that Earth Day? Isn't it? Yeah, good day for that. The Rotary Club will complete the construction. The industrial arts class has not yet received the materials to build the ADA compliant picnic tables. Imagine that. The current industrial arts building is slated to be demolished after the asbestos abatement in mid-May, so the students will be completing the tables in August when school's back in session. Housing. Shedco continues to work with potential developers and property owners to secure adequate housing development to meet workforce demands. There are a number of options being explored. I know that's a very nebulous statement and I want to apologize for that. It's, it's one of those things that, uh, can't be talked about until the signature's on the dotted line. So, I appreciate that. A few offshoots of housing. The housing study grant, Shedco submitted the grant application early February and we've been told that our study will likely be completed in late fall. Hang on to that thought. The study is required for any housing development funds that may become available. And if you remember, you were, uh, approved payment for 50% of that cost. So subsequently, HB, House Bill 1033, um, was ratified. That final bill for the housing development infrastructure funding was signed by the governor and it included $100 million in grant funding and $100 million in revolving loans. It was originally proposed as $200 million in grant funding to meet, to be administered by the Governor's Office of Economic Development, recognizing that housing is economic development. Now, it will all be administered, administered by South Dakota Housing Authority, both the loan and the grant portions. The grant funds, that's the $100 million, must be a three-way match between the developer, the city, or the, or the county, and the state. There are some stipulations around what types of infrastructure the grant portion may be used for and I will be learning more about that as the application period draws closer. Any projects that would receive funding should be shovel-ready at the time of the application. The final plan should come in May, request for comment in June, and it should possibly go live in July. Once I realized that we were not going to get our housing study done until the end of the year, it occurred to me that every town in the state either applied to have their housing study done or to have it updated. So I emailed everybody I could think of at GOED and said, here's what's happening. And so, as it stands right now, the SD Housing Authority is looking at removing the third-party housing study requirement, depending on community size, but the municipalities will still need some sort of documentation that shows stock, how much of it, what type, et cetera. That said, having the housing study update is still good for us going forward. It lasts for five years. Any questions about that?
Was 2018 the last one?
Oh, gosh.
I think so.
It's six years old.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, so we're a year out of, out of date.
Okay.
Yeah. Western Dakota Tech College. You probably already know that I'm on the Board of Trustees for Western Dakota Technical College. We completed a two-day review by the Higher Learning Commission in March. The Higher Learning Commission conducts an assurance review to determine whether any higher learning institution meets the criteria for accreditation and the cycle occurs over every fourth and 10th year. This was year four review for Western Dakota Tech College. The Board of Trustees always participates in that review process. Just prior to Dr. Bowman's tenure, the school had been placed on probation by HLC as a result of previous reviews which resulted in failure to meet standards. That was the assessment. A second finding of that, this time around, would have meant school, meant school closure. We received a preliminary draft stating that we passed with flying colors. So, we're really proud of that. That's quite a turnaround in a, in a small timeframe. Also, Western Dakota Technical College held a West River Career and Technical Education Conference, which was relative, well-attended by representatives of Hot Springs. At least four of us were there, myself and representatives from the school district. And I handed out, um, a diagram that shows the approved CTE programs for 2001, 2002. And I'm sorry about the really small font, but if you look down, you'll see that Hot Springs has more accredited approved programs than any other school in our region, except Aberdeen. Aberdeen's at the very top and we have seven approved programs. And they fall into four categories. Let's see if I can pick them out. There's business, there's ag, there's technology, and, um, health services. They're all available at the school district. Hospital marketing. If you remember, we received $98,000 for the hospital to do marketing. The static ad for the 40-plus positions available at Fall River Health Services is complete and available. I just had a couple of copies made in color that I distributed because frankly, in black and white, they just look like mud. I and Tiff Robertson, who's their marketing director, Paula Cape, who's recruiting, and Marcy Largent, who's HL, we, HR insisted on having the phrase that says, "We saved you a spot in Hot Springs." We really wanted to delineate ourselves from the other communities in the state. And I think the one that I handed out was in the upper right-hand corner. That's also an ad that can be placed on anybody's website and it comes in all different shapes. So, I think I have a, a square that I passed around, but it can be a long, narrow rectangle. It can be a wide, uh, narrow rectangle. That can be a header, any shape or size. You can even put it in a banner. They will be also coming out with a video. It's all prepared, but the, um, the marketing company out of Minneapolis is having a few struggles with Google to get it to go online. And then lastly, um, in March, Kuno Hansen, Development Director of the NOAA Foundation, which is a nonprofit that educates farmers and manufacturers around industrial hemp industry systems and processes, held a conference, a workshop, here in Hot Springs on March 20th. Speakers included Ken Myers. He's the Eastern South Dakota Hemp Association Vice President. John Peterson, um, of, of Dakota Hemp, which provides expertise in the farming. I have that wrong. What's, what is the first word in Dakota Hemp? Okay, I'm sorry. Dakota Hemp, which provides expertise in the farming of industrial hemp. And Derek Doman of Horizon Hemp Seed, who is the sole distributor of certified industrial hemp seed. And I'd like to point out that, uh, Kuno can, can answer any question you would possibly have, but I did want to say that industrial hemp seed is distinct from CBD hemp seed. Okay. And I would like to ask Kuno to come up and say a few words about, uh, the NOAA Foundation and his work.
Hello, everyone. We do, uh...
Sir, can we get your name and address, please?
Yep, it's, uh, Kuno Hansen, 321 North River Drive. So, I've been in the hemp industry for the last six years, pioneering the, the systems and processes between manufacturing and agriculture. Basically, working with, uh, how to grow it, all the way down to particle sizing for the manufacturer needs to produce, uh, the many products that hemp can produce between, um, major industries, that, major industries. What we want to do here in Fall River County is, what we can do, we developed a system that is the largest producing, um, decortication system that is in the hemp industry. So, it's 15 to 20 tons an hour. And what we're going to be able to provide is workshops to, for farmers and manufacturers for a 10,000-acre co-op system, um, that will be able to produce biodiesel, protein, protein powder, cottonizing for textiles, and particle sizing for herd that'll open up the doors for hempcrete, plastics, paper, composites, absorvents. So, what, what I've been doing the last six years is working with, um, those processes all the way down the line. There's a lot, there's a lot of steps in the hemp industry, so I'm here to answer any questions after this. There's a lot of detail that we'll be providing workshops on, um, at our location, at the NOAA Foundation Edees store that we will be doing our grand opening with in May. We also will be putting on a bigger workshop to go down and describe more about these details in, uh, these areas of industry. On a smaller level, we, we are going to be starting the hempcrete development this year with, um, a few locations that we have for hempcrete homes, which is, I'll give one feature of these homes, sustainability-wise, and that's, uh, 68 to 70% you'll be saving on your heating and cooling with this, with this building material. There's a lot to go into about this, so, um, any questions after this, we'd be happy to answer. I have some hemp, hemp wood here to, to look at, to... It's going around. Okay, perfect. Um, I think that we'll just leave it there. There's, there's a lot of detail that goes with that, but, um, great to meet everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. I've never seen more expertise and information in one person about all the industrial hemp possibilities, um, the ways that farm machinery can be reconfigured to deal with hemp. This is the man. So, uh, as we get a little further down the road, we would love to come back and give a little more in-depth presentation to you. Excellent. Any questions about any of that?
I just have one question out of curiosity. On your biodiesel, is it a standalone process and storage? Or do you, uh, sell it to one of the local refineries for blending?
So, it'll be standalone for, for actual manufacturing and a smaller-scale system for the farmers as well. So, it's a 97% vertical, which is clean-to-air center view. So, there's a small-scale version of that, a large-scale version of that. Now, what we, with the 10,000-acre system, it's a million gallons, a million gallons per year.
Thank you.
Hundred gallons per year.
Um, your wood products and, uh, looks like siding from, I haven't seen it yet, but it looks like siding. Is that stuff that's all grown, manufactured in our state?
No, that's, uh, South Dakota...
Can you, sir, can you come back down to the microphone? Thank you.
Uh, this is what I've been doing in Colorado. I'm actually a South Dakota native from Aberdeen. Uh, it, it wasn't legal here yet and this is, South Dakota's really big year to come on the map and the first thing I did when it came legal was come, uh, to the Eastern Side Association and combined efforts with them. And, uh, that's, the big move is this year to, to bring these processes here, to make South Dakota the epicenter of industrial hemp. It's really been, CBD's been really the focus across the US and this is really where the doors open, um, for these processes.
Do you have a 10,000-acre site?
Yes, we do. We have a location that, uh, we, we're working with right now. Uh, luckily, my family, both my, um, sister and mother are business partners and, uh, real estate agents. So, we, we have a site on the Hot, 79th corner there, hopefully.
Okay.
So, how, uh, just out of curiosity, so we grow it in South Dakota. Where do we send it for the manufacturing for your wood products?
Uh, the wood products are to show you an example of what manufacturers can do. That's actually from, uh, out of Kentucky and, uh, that's Greg Wilson with Hempwood. And it's a very, uh, simple process, just cross-lamination. Uh, so any lumberyard, we, we actually started in South Dakota with Nyman, uh, when they shut down their 120, uh, personnel plant. So, what we wanted to do was convert them from their forestry. So, that's, this is what that model's going to bring, is the education of these manufacturers to come here and learn and to take this model to their locations. Because really, logistically, this is a, is a, is a big move. So, it's 10,000-plus pounds per acre. So, you want to keep it in that. It's a rural economy builder, is what it is. And it's self-sufficient between biofuels, textiles, plastics, a lot of different areas.
I want to ask him a clarifying question for your sake, if that's okay. So, you mentioned that, um, that you were looking at, um, a facility here in Fall River County for three production areas. Oil for biofuel, fiber, fiber cottonizing for textiles. And then the last one you mentioned was herd particle sizing? And that is where the wood products would come in, I believe? Is that correct?
Yes, the herd is the cellulose.
So, the herd is the cellulose. And once you particle size it, then you would have, you would be able to resale it for plastics, hempcrete, wood, paper, composites, and absorvents? Is that correct?
Correct.
So, the intermediary product would be made here? And then it would go to whatever manufacturer was going to make wood products or bioplastic? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
What this facility, what this facility will open up is, is, did you give the, hand out the paper with the industries on there? Okay, yeah. So, that's explaining basically, giving you a highlight and facts, which are many. I just picked out which ones are crucial. But those are the industries this, this facility will open up. So, the particle sizing really comes down to, uh, the fiber. What's so tough about this plant is it breaks down into so many parts and that's your fiber, your herd, your seed, and you're also your biomass from that, your waste is even usable, the whole plant. And so, it's going to open the door for sustainable economies to shoot.
Would you happen to know, I mean, just shooting from the head, what the difference is from, per se, a true all-wood product, per se? As again, you know, to, to the manufactured wood products that you have here?
It's 20% stronger than oak and it's, it's made sustainably, year out, stronger, lighter. That's actually a heavier piece. That's, uh, that was a glue lamb. But the real method is the cross-lamination, just like OSB. And that's where the natural lignin in the hemp fuses together to create that stronger board. So, stronger, lighter, so better on logistics as well as be able to produce it in, in a local area.
You say it's harder than oak?
20% harder than oak.
Are you going to have to drill it?
You could drill it, nail it. Uh, it, it does, it does beat up your, your bits, but it'll nail right through for, for framing.
Because if it's harder than oak, you probably won't be able to drive a nail through it.
You, you could drive a nail though. It does, it can drive through, but, uh, you'll definitely eat up your screws. Car bite, car bite screws.
How competitive, competitive is it on price?
On price, we'll be able to get it as cheap as wood before the, the big hit of COVID. So, you're 6,000 pounds per acre plus for the wood side. It's about 30%, it's 30% lighter than regular woods, so 2x4x8 is about nine pounds, so it's going to be about six pounds.
And on this building material, have you actually built a home with it? What is the stack, the, the standard statistics on that?
So, the, so the wood, uh, no, we haven't. The wood has only been done in one place in Kentucky and really, it's the same process as engineered wood. But hempcrete, yes, have provided the first hempcrete homes. That's actually what I've been doing since 2017 and that's what we'll be building here is starting with the hempcrete because it has the permits and it's ready to go. Uh, the wood's going to take longer on the structural engineering.
I'm just, and just for my benefit, I'm just wondering if the home catches on fire, um...
Hempcrete's fireproof.
It's fireproof?
Yep, actually, California's making a big move on it for their mountain homes.
Okay.
Please be sure to tell us when your educational opportunities are because it sounds like we have a lot of interesting questions in the process and I'd be happy to share that with our council when it's available.
Great, and I'd love to, you know, come back and give the full presentation, have a great slide, videos, everything in, you know, in production, not just talking and showing you the, the whole processes.
I personally would be interested.
I would too, sir.
Yeah.
The samples you have there are very impressive.
Love to show you more too, so that's what our store is all about too, is that educational piece. And love to see you guys down there to answer more questions and I'll be glad to answer any questions after this as well.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Show stealer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve personnel actions A through F?
I make a motion to approve personnel actions A through F.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Need a motion on Resolution 2022-12, resolution to amend the citywide fee resolution.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-12, a resolution to amend the citywide fee resolution to increase the retail pricing of airport fuel from $5.50 per gallon to, uh, $5.65 per gallon.
Second.
Discussion? Bill, is there anything you want to add?
Currently, the average price within the 65 mile now, or 65 mile radius that we look at is 582 a gallon. And again, what we try to do is sell at a price that, because in preparation to buy our next load. And so our airport manager has reached out, because we've had this discussion since we've had our last airport advisory meeting. He's reached out to our airport advisory committee members and has gained concurrence that 565 would be an appropriate price to go up to.
What are we paying per gallon buying it?
It was on the last agenda, and I don't recall, but I can find that information for you.
I want to.
It was 512, I think. If I were to guess the number, I think it was 512.
I thought it was 496.
It could have been.
It's been, it's been crazy.
I'll find out for sure for you and Gabe.
But even, even Rushville, which has been sitting way low for months, if not years, is up to 575 a gallon. Spearfish is up to 639 a gallon, or six, yeah, 639. Lusk is 535. Newcastle's 559. So with the summer coming on and usage going up, this seems appropriate.
Out of curiosity, what is the average capacity of a two-passenger plane, two, four?
It kind of, I'm not sure what the fuel tank capacity is. Our, and the amount we sell per customer, I don't have that in front of me. It may vary from a five gallon top off to 35 or 40 gallons to some local customers that will bring their 300 gallon tank in for their private airport and fill up.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item A, possible motion discussion to renew option year two, the city school facility use agreement.
Make the motion to renew the option year two, the city school facility use agreement effective May 1st, 2022.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Discussion? So this is the same contract you folks approved last year?
Yep.
And the school reviewed it and agreed to it at their last meeting as well.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item B, a possible motion discussion to approve golf court, golf instruction contract 2022-9.
Make the motion to approve golf instruction contract 2022-9 between COHS and Andrew Kerr to provide golf lessons for beginners, intermediate, and advanced golf students on the individual or group basis, as well as a periodic group clinics at rate to be determined by market appropriate by the instructor and golf operations manager.
Second. Discussion? Jeff, I think this one's yours.
Sure. To clarify, this is in addition to the golf ops manager, the, the contract you, the council originally approved to allow him to provide lessons in addition, outside of his normal hours. This year, there, with all the changes going on and all the things we're doing out there, he doesn't have the time right now to take on additional lessons. We've got the demand. And we've been fortunate enough to get Mr. Kerr on track. PJ was able to work it out with him to bring in. So it is a higher percentage contract, a lesser percentage for us in this sense. But it's a, it's a standard industry contract with 95 and five, and he brings in groups. And our goal in that is not to make money, but to increase our rounds and, and create new golfers. And help the mayor with his game a little bit at the same time.
Can't help that.
Not sure it can get any better.
What's his history or where'd he come from as far as?
PJ, can you address this real quick? PJ's got a little more specific information.
Hi there, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Yeah, so he's actually a former PGA professional teacher as well. So he was a teacher in California, Santa Barbara. And he was in the, the second largest golf clinic in the whole country. So he's got a lot of experience there.
Wow.
And yeah, we're lucky to bring him on and hopefully drive a lot of traffic, a lot of new golfers. You know, that's the key out there, I think, is, is more activity and more revenue. So, yep, should get a lot of carryover there.
Which, do you know which course out of Santa Barbara?
Yeah, so he was teaching out of Glenany as well as Twin Oaks.
Okay.
Yep, both great golf courses.
Sir, just for the record, what's your name and address?
Yeah, sorry, PJ Wetzel. It's 200 Cardinal Drive in Hot Springs here.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item C, a possible motion discussion to approve a new golf course point of sale and management system. Jeff, PJ, I believe this one's on you.
I'd like PJ to come up and go ahead and do.
Do we want to move in second first?
I'm sorry, that would be a good idea.
Make a motion?
Excellent idea.
I make a motion to approve the new golf course point of sale and management system and to authorize finance office staff to cancel current agreements with Golf Now Point of Sale, ETS, merchant services, gift cards, and Squarespace website hosting.
Second.
Adrian, would you come up and brief chat on?
Yeah, for sure. Yep, so, all right. Yeah, so this was one of the, the main things that was brought to my attention with the advisory committee upon signing up to be the new operations manager. They've had a lot of issues with this current software that they've had, as well as cost, which is something I brought here too. I ran a report from last year. And the current agreement that we have with Golf Now is we allow trades of golf course rounds, as well as cart leases. And we are allowed to give up to four a day to them. And since we host our reservation software with them, they can jump in front of us and take would-be customers and offer them discounted rates and sell there a lot of times. So just last year alone, we gave 501 traded rounds to Golf Now. This year, we're already year-to-date, we're at 48, so we're on pace to go more than that. So just to give you a context, that round plus golf cart revenue is 68, 62 with tax per. So that ended up being a little over $34,000 worth of revenue that was lost because it was traded.
Okay, so what is the, what is the savings and/or the difference between?
Yep, absolutely. So the new system that we have agreed with the advisory committee is going to be Lightspeed Golf, which is a really well-known brand. Lightspeed is one of the largest POS providers in the whole nation. And we researched them because they offer the most up-to-date advanced software. They also have a lot of other benefits, like the web hosting, SMS and email marketing, lots of new tools that we have for our members to give, you know, discounts and keep in touch with them and all that. And the cost on that, with all those modules that we have, is $500 a month. And it's only $200 for the off-season. So it'll be around $4,000 a year for that system, as opposed to north of $3,000 to $4,000. So lots of benefits on my side with new tools and better software and lots of savings. So.
So are your charges with a card, per se, a credit card, goes through this?
Yeah, so instead of having a third-party service operator
Right.
For the credit cards, we chose to go with Lightspeed Payments.
Okay.
And they also have lower fees at two and a half percent, plus 10 cents per.
That was going to be my next question, what, what was the difference?
So yeah, cheaper than we currently have. And when they're integrated, we don't have any software issues that we've had in the past.
And everything we have now, we do not have to update or change computers or?
We do have to change one terminal, which is just to upgrade it, really. We need a, exactly. We, we need a touchscreen and we need a customer-facing display, as well as a new payment terminal. Payment terminal is provided for free, so that's over $1,000 worth of hardware. And also for signing up, they gave us $1,000 for the customer display terminal. So it's going to almost wash out to zero.
So are we not going to give away $36,000 worth?
Yeah, exactly. We're not going to give away anything. We're going to, we're going to pay the 500 a month and we're going to capture all that revenue. So it should be a win-win for everything, so.
Seems better.
Yeah, definitely.
Wow.
Good.
Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Strongly recommended by finance and administration.
Seems like a no-brainer.
Yep. Just wondering where we were last year.
Right.
We didn't have PJ last year.
We did approve that golf contract last year though.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item D, a possible motion discussion to approve and authorize public works engineer Tracy Bastian to solicit bids.
Make a motion to approve and authorize public works engineer Tracy Bastian to solicit bids and publish the notice to bidders two times for the golf course pro shop retaining wall project.
Second. Discussion?
Is this, this is more than just retaining walls? What this sounds like, it's just a retaining wall. Or is the word retaining wall system mean a whole lot more than what it looks like? Is this like including the pilings that are underneath and the supports under the decking and all that?
...all materials, labor, and incidentals to construct the retaining wall system near the golf course clubhouse.
It is a retaining wall in its simplest form, but it's, it's a major retaining wall. It's not a rock.
Plans and specs are available at the city engineer's office.
So it's per Anderson Engineers?
Yes.
Thing that we spent a lot of money on?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's not just the retaining wall. There will be repairs to the, the deck and some of the supports around the northwest side of the clubhouse that have been damaged. So it's not just the retaining wall, but the retaining wall project to include those additional repairs.
Just wanted to get that info out there. Okay.
Any other questions?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item E, possible motion discussion to authorize the police chief to pursue the purchase of a used 2019 Dodge Charger.
I make a motion to authorize the police chief to pursue the purchase of a used 2019 Dodge Charger from Action Auto Sales and Finance, Inc. in Lehigh, Utah at a cost of $30,796.
Second.
And Bill, I believe you'd
Yes.
Like to entertain an amendment to this motion?
Yes. This, this vehicle has been purchased out from under us. I believe that's correct, Captain?
It is in the process.
Name and address, please.
Badge number.
Name, rank, serial number, sir.
It is in the
Name and?
Let's have it come up. It is, sale is pending right now. It hasn't completely been purchased. It may still fall out from underneath the purchaser. So tomorrow morning, we're going to call again and see where they're at with it.
So in the event that the purchaser's credit is okay and it goes through, the amendment I would propose is something to the effect, and I'll look to the finance officer to see if I need more words than what I'm going to provide. A motion to authorize the police chief to pursue the purchase of a used vehicle. Because what's happening is they go out, they look, they find it, and then if they have to wait for our council meeting, somebody with faster money gets the car.
I would just request that you add within already approved budget authority.
So that would be my requested amendment, that we authorize the police chief to pursue the purchase of a used vehicle within the already authorized budget authority.
Budget limit.
Yep, good job.
Second. But Linda.
I don't know if you made that a proposal. Just proposing an amendment, so you have to have, who first and second admitted, agree to the amendment, then you can vote.
Second.
I'm ready.
It's Linda.
Okay, so do I read this?
Do you just say yes to accept the proposal for the amendment? If you do, or you can say no, you don't.
Um, yes, I accept the amendment for the proposal.
And I second that.
Okay.
All right. So is everyone clear on the amended motion? That it's to authorize the police department to purchase a vehicle within the already authorized budget?
Do we know what range that puts this in?
It would be the same range.
Yes, she knows what her approved budget authority is. Which includes outfitting the vehicle. So if I were to give you a dollar amount right now, she's not approved to purchase it up to that amount. She has to also outfit it, and she knows where she's supposed to be at for that.
Okay.
Could I, I guess I'm out of the loop, I'm assuming, but why are we at a point where we need to buy another car? Well, this is the approved, what we're talking about is the vehicle that we approved in the last budget hearing. Okay. The, dang, he left. Charlotte, are you back there?
Yes.
He's right there. Captain's still there.
Yeah, he's right here. We lost the new vehicle because chips aren't available and the dealer sold the existing inventory to other departments and just kind of left us hanging.
We are learning a lot about different ways you can buy vehicles from different cities and communities. We're not the only one facing it.
Yeah, we've searched South Dakota, and there are no new vehicles available. What made this particular vehicle so attractive to the department is it had, I think, about 40,000, 41,000 miles on it, but it was an administrative vehicle with the full pursuit package on it, but it had never been a patrol vehicle. So it hadn't been as severely used. And so it was a really good find, right up until the point the other buyer came in. Well, I know this town, and it's small, so I could see that coming out of there. Yeah, I see that coming out of there. So do you have, as a question to you, Cap, is there other vehicles that you know of that are out there right now that you really weren't, this was your top choice, I guess, but is there others out there that you know of that?
We looked at Durango's and Chargers, and this was by far the best deal, even among the Chargers. The Chargers, Chargers are cheaper than the Durango's. The used ones, I don't know what the new ones are doing, but we were just looking at the used ones at this point. And I think we looked at probably four or five vehicles. And this was by far the, the cheapest by quite a bit. But yes, we are, we have been looking. We quit looking when we found this one. But if tomorrow morning we find out that it was sold, then we'll start that quest again.
Are you finding inventory turns over pretty quickly?
Charlotte, you've been a little more, it's turning over pretty quick? Yeah.
And if you'll notice in the, in your information packet, the, the letter that the chief provided, they've, they've gotten on the list for the Kansas State Police. But there's about an eight-month delay on that, which would put us, almost put us into next year. But they're still making that application in case we have to go through the same process next year. So they're, they're implementing what they're learning to try to be prepared. And Kansas, my understanding, and I'm just repeating what I read in the letter, Kansas State Police retire their vehicles at 50,000 miles, so.
Smart move.
Yeah, we found that program and a couple others is recommend Yeah, we found that program and a couple others, as recommendations from other communities in South Dakota where they're purchasing vehicles in this way, where departments that are lucky enough to be able to have a program like this are retiring vehicles that some smaller communities can utilize. Of course, they'd like to have brand-new ones, but the budget authority this year may not be available next year, so they want to make sure they can, they get a decent vehicle, but not going to buy something just because they have to or looking for something like this, the cherry opportunity.
Captain, on those vehicles you're looking at, this chair, on the vehicles you're looking at, do they also, these agencies or states you're getting them from, are they including their maintenance programs and documentation on that so we know what the vehicle was like prior to us getting it?
Yes. The researcher says yes.
I like that. Yes. Now, just out of curiosity, are you preferable to four-wheel drive, which is a lot of the difference between the two that you're looking at, a Charger and a Durango? Are you wanting more so a car two-wheel drive, or are you wanting more so a four-wheel?
The Chargers, the police Chargers are all-wheel drive.
Yeah.
And I would highly recommend staying clear of anything two-wheel drive.
Yeah.
We have one two-wheel drive vehicle right now, and that is the Crown Vic. That is a solid car, and I think it will be when I'm long gone. But that two-wheel drive is terrible in the snow.
It kills you. But yeah, the cost difference between having a Durango and a Charger, yeah, that's a pretty good difference. But I was just wondering if you guys were wanting more so something taller, higher as far as use? Is that what you're...
I personally like the Chargers for their maneuverability. I prefer it over the Durango some. Prefer the Durango because of the room inside. I am tall, it's hard for me to get in and out of the Charger, but I'll take that sacrifice for what the Charger offers me.
Yeah, once you're in, you're in. Okay, that's just out of curiosity. Thank you.
Thanks, Cap.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cap.
Couple of questions. The question has been raised, given that we're not fully staffed and that there are vehicles sitting around the police department daily, why do we need a new vehicle?
If we're not keeping up on the vehicles and we lose a year, God forbid we lose two years, then the vehicles are going to come up, they're going to start breaking down, and we were in that position already. And we were swapping vehicles, we were short vehicles, and it was, it was, it could end up being an issue where we can't get somewhere where we need to get when several of us need to get there. So to stay up on the vehicles, when I'm at home and I come out on a call-out, if I don't have a vehicle there and I'm off-duty, but whoever's on-duty needs backup, and I'm the one that's going to back them up, I would have to come in my POV, sorry, my personally-owned vehicle. I would have to come into the department, swap over to a patrol car, and then respond in the patrol car. That's not feasible, because usually when I get called out, it's because it's an emergency, and I would have to do the speed limit in my POV all the way into town. Insurance isn't going to cover me for things like that. So I would say the biggest need for keeping up to speed on the vehicles, keeping them fresh, is that contingency when things drop and we need, as many officers right now, when the time counts, we need that fleet to be, to be ready.
I bet we do want to become police as well. So we think that we don't have staff right now is not a good argument when our expectation is to fill those positions and then decide everyone.
I'm big on maintenance, running a cost sheet per car. I talked with Billy. Have you guys started that program? I requested that a couple months back.
We started something, Charlotte would know better what that is. There's a spreadsheet. There are some things that are being implemented to keep track of each vehicle, what's going on with it, how long it's down, for what reasons it's down, so we can look back and see, man, this car's getting to be a lemon. We're putting more money into it in maintenance than what it's worth. Let's offload it and get something that's going to be a lower cost before we start putting more and more into it, or we can still sell it.
Yeah, and in that budget time, it really helps us to make decisions. So that's why I requested it, and we've had it in the past. Why it stopped, I don't know, but I'd like to have that again, per vehicle. Just, that's just a question, you know, if that has been discussed with you, but I'd like to see those on all the vehicles. The other thing would be, what is your, what is your ideal, in your mind, your ideal mileage of rotating the vehicle out?
My Charger's at 71,000 right now.
Okay.
And there has been some issues with it. We just replaced the wiring harness. That seemed to get rid of 99% of the issues. That's, that's the vehicle that I have, that I love. I feel like it's a pet. Like, I name it, and I wash it, and I feed it, and I go outside and I pat it. Not really. But I had the option of taking the new Durango, one of the new Durangos that were supposed to come in, but I was going to stick with my Charger just because I know it. But it's 71,000 miles. If you'd have asked me two months ago, I'd have said 60,000. But with the wiring harness being fixed, my car is dependable again. It left me high and dry a couple times, which was not a good situation. But with, with that, it's hard for me to nail down something for you. I would say between, it depends on the car, too, how hard it's been used, if it's been put away wet.
My other question would be, once you're, once you're in, you have the vehicles you feel you need, you're fully staffed, I really think each car should have one driver. That way, that driver knows the vehicle, and you can watch the maintenance, and also we can watch them by watching the maintenance if one particular car is going, needs brakes constantly. There's lots of things you look for. I'm really a supporter of rotating vehicles out, heavy equipment, about every four to five years, vehicles for staff. I always figured, once you get to about 85,000, you need to start looking.
Another reason to have one driver per vehicle.
Exactly.
I don't, I don't wear anybody else's Batman belt but mine. I know where my stuff is on here. My vest is the same way. Everybody configures it differently, because when you're in the heat of the moment, you can't be thinking about where things are, what you got to do. So I fully support one driver per vehicle for additional reasons as well, the contingency reasons.
In my questions, I'm not advocating for not getting a new vehicle. I wanted to give you the opportunity to answer publicly why it's important that we continue what we discussed last year at the budget sessions, is to update our old fleet. But again, the question has been put to us, or had been put out there. When we're down officers, and we don't need all new ones, why are we going ahead and getting it? And we hope to not be down officers for a long period of time. We don't know what the funding's going to be like. We don't know what the next budget sessions are going to be like. So while we have, while council's given budget authority to purchase a vehicle, I think we need to purchase that vehicle. So to the second question, again, it's been suggested that, why do we need a new vehicle? Because there's extra police vehicles sitting around the police station. Why aren't we using those? Why are we looking to get another one? So what's your response to that?
So here's where we are as a police department, and we're looking down the road to the land of awesome, where officers are begging to be hired on with us, and we can have the cream of the crop. And we're taking steps, there's stepping stones to get to that land of awesome, and we have taken some of those stepping stones. As we get there, there's an infrastructure that needs to be in place in order to continue to take those steps. One of those are the vehicles, because when we get fully staffed and we don't have the vehicles, then why are we hiring any officers to come on if we don't have the vehicles for them? I realize we can trade them around, but reasons have been stated why that's not a good idea. So, and we've got guys in the pipeline, interviews coming that I'm excited about. So again, as we take those stepping stones toward what I call the land of awesome, the infrastructure of having those vehicles ready for these officers to get plugged into, I think is crucial.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. We're all talking new car, but yet you say we're trying to upgrade what we have, but yet we're stepping back three years into a car, a used car. So we're not updating our cars by getting a used car?
It is an upgrade in that we are going to have another car at a decent price. Getting this car is a painful purchase, but a necessary purchase, because a new car is not available. This particular one is in really good shape. If it was a patrol car with 41,000 miles on it, it had the cage and the lights and everything like that, I would be like, that's a lot of miles for a car that's been a patrol car, that's been hammered on the throttle, hammered on the brake. I wouldn't be as excited about it. This particular vehicle has not been that patrol car, yet it is the police package. So it is a unique vehicle in supplying what we need to help us move forward, even though it's not a stepping stone as much as it might be a piece of sandstone that is breaking apart. Lack of a better...
Are you not going to buy a police car if it don't have a police package to it?
So ask that again?
Are you going to buy a different car if it doesn't have the police package to it?
If it's a Charger, it's got to have the all-wheel drive.
Yeah.
That's the main thing.
And all Chargers don't.
Correct. Some Chargers are a V6 and two-wheel drive.
The only reason I ask is, I told Bill about a car at Peterson Motors in Sturgis. It's a '19 Durango, for, it has 40,000 miles, but they want 38 for it, which is higher than that, but...
How many miles?
40,000.
40,000? Okay, so about the same miles?
Yeah.
About 10,000 more for the...
But that's their asking price, you never know.
That's standard. It's not a police vehicle, right? Police package? Is the one, the one you're talking about in Utah, is a police package?
Correct. The one, the Charger we're looking at that is the good deal is a police vehicle. That's how it was built, to be a police vehicle. It was owned by a police department. It just was not a patrol car.
Yeah, I realize that. But if you don't get it, I was just telling you that.
Sure, yeah, I appreciate that.
Any more questions?
No, we did put together a vehicle life expectancy replacement chart, per se.
Yeah, we started looking at a vehicle policy for the police department, and it's still a work in progress, but, and historically, it's kind of looking at about a seven-year retirement on police vehicles. The 2014 Explorer is about ready for retirement, based on its performance, so...
Is that our oldest one?
No, the 11 Crown Vic is the oldest.
I thought we got rid of that.
No, 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 no. We got rid of the 2013 Taurus.
Okay.
No, the Crown Vic is...
It's a beauty.
It's a sled.
Yes. But that information we put together on retiring of vehicles does not only pertain to seven years. That's in good condition, lasting, running well, seven-year possible retirement. But if you've got one that there's a lot of maintenance issues and we're having trouble with, there's no reason to put good money after bad and not replace that vehicle. So it can be less than seven years. Ideally, on a good-running vehicle, going through the cycle and keep replacing as we go along would be a seven-year program.
Well, my approach, well, not this. We put together is, I'd like to know what kind of vehicle we're getting, and the mileage and everything. Right now, we'll never know that until they buy it.
Well, I think you've got to trust the end-users. They know what they need, they know what they're looking for, and I think we need to trust our department heads and our specialists. I don't...
I don't think this sets a precedence either. It's unique, the circumstance that we're in.
Oh, no, that is, I agree. It's just a situation we've been put in by others that we have no control over. So, no, I'm okay with this, for the situation that we're in. But I don't, I'm not, I don't want to make anything any harder, but when it comes to budget time, that's why I talked to Billy, to talk to the mechanic. And I want all that paperwork, because when it comes right down to it, it really tells you a whole lot, a lot more than just about the vehicle. So, and it helps us to see where we're at when we're looking at purchases. So I'm not, I'm not trying to make things harder, but I think overall, going with a system that monitors each and every vehicle and its driver, overall will save money and actually help us make decisions.
That's the reason we also went, made the decision to always go to, is it Sun Tech that puts all the extras on, and they know how to do it right, and we're not going to have the problems going forward because it's going to be done right? So all of these little steps are hopefully going to be awesome land sooner than later.
All right. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm not against getting a car. I think we need one, but I'm involved knowing this because of me not getting to know what it is and stuff first.
All right, thank you. The motion passes.
Like he's the car specialist.
New business item F. Possible motion discussion to approve a lease purchase agreement from John Deere Financial. Thank you, Captain Shidley.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the lease agreement, lease purchase agreement from John Deere Financial for 2022 John Deere 624P wheel loader at a rate of 3.25%, with six annual payments of $35,397.02, and authorize the finance office to issue the advanced lease payment due at signing procurement approved during 2022 budget planning.
Second. Discussion? So this is the final step to you folks approving the purchase of them during your 2022, or lease, not purchase, the lease of them during your 2022 budget sessions?
It is a lease to own. We estimated 5% at the rate, came in at 3.25. We estimated annual payments at 39.5, came in at 35.4. So slower than higher.
Yay.
And are, is the feeling that we're going to purchase this one outright?
It's a lease to own, so when we make the six total payments, we have paid for the 100 and, what's on here? Total 195,481 dollars and 80 cents due after the 2022 payment.
I'm a big, big fan of rotating equipment and vehicles out at a proper time. That's why I was asking.
This one's replacing a front-end loader that's how old? Just for, you know?
I might believe that's seven years.
It's like 20 years old or something?
Yeah.
Extravagantly old?
It's not quite a dinosaur, but it's pretty close.
I was told it had square wheels.
Well, they put new tires on it, so I hope not. We're keeping it, though, aren't we?
I guess.
Yeah, that'll be the secondary.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business item G, a possible motion discussion to acknowledge the notification of raffle.
I'll make a motion to acknowledge the notification of raffle with Trampas Askovitz Memorial Foundation for a guy... Foundation for a gun raffle with the drawing on June 4th of '22 at the Mueller Center, following the 11th Annual Trampas Haskovitz Golf Tournament. Proceeds from the raffle will be donated to local first responders.
Second.
Discussion. So, this is their notification that they'll be selling raffle tickets within the city of Hot Springs. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item H. Possible motion discussion to accept the quote from Black Hills Technologies.
Make the motion to accept the quote from Black Hills Technologies and approve allocating future contingency dollars of $6,700 to purchase and refurbish back, backup server for the City Hall.
Second. Discussion.
Mark Boxbaum, 11835 Sundance Drive, Hot Springs.
Could you speak up a little more?
IT resources have about the shortest effective lifetime of almost anything you can buy, but the cost of the professional services to commission old versus new are about the same. So, with no review, no analysis, no knowledge of the requirements or the offering, really nothing more than this agenda item, it seems likely to me that the total cost of ownership would be lower with new hardware, just input.
Can you share more detail with us on that?
Can you tell we're novice, novice like this?
Anything goes wrong, it's the professional services costs that eat you alive. You get new hardware, you got a little more reliability, you got warrant, vendor warranties with it, it's going to last longer, you need to touch it less often, it'll be more current, it'll last longer, it will survive software upgrades longer, be supported hardware, drivers are available for the components, the CPUs or whatever kind of multi-threading you need for the latest server 2022, that sort of thing. It's just going to last longer with lower professional services costs. But, again, I have no knowledge of any specifics on this, other than the agenda item.
There is a quote in the public information folder that shows what part of that is actually the, the process processor, and then what's the labor to install and what software will be installed on.
Right, was it more professional services than hardware?
No.
Okay.
And I don't know, I'm, I'm not an expert either on IT stuff. We know that our IT provider has recommended this, he recommended the refurbished over the new for various reasons. I don't, I can't defend those because I don't, I don't understand it all, but I apologize for that.
I, I think the biggest reason that recommending the refurbished is to keep the cost of the city down. But the, the server, refurbished server itself is 4,200. And then that includes 256 gigabyte RAM, four terabyte of SAS storage, a RAID controller, redundant power supply, and then the Windows 2019 standard server is 919, and then labor to install is 1,500.
I just come from a background of deploying mostly federal contracts, DOE, FAA, DHS, DoD. We never bought used hardware, never.
We never what?
Bought used hardware.
Actually, the federal contract, a lot of the IT contracts are prohibited from buying.
Right, yeah.
We did cheap.
And it should be a backup server.
No.
So, I'm, I'm confident that the reason that the refurbished server is being quoted to us is because it will be, you know, out-of-pocket less to the city. We could certainly table this, and he'd be happy, I'm sure, to quote us a brand-new server. And then you would have the two costs available to you to figure out which direction you want to go. The importance in having this done, and getting a backup server, whether it's refurbished or new, is what we've been going through the last couple of months with server issues. And when the last one went down, it took a bit to fix it, and we were fortunate that it wasn't on payday or some other things, or we might have had some employees that weren't getting paid. So, the, the need is there, the discussion seems to center around refurbished or new.
If I can also offer real quick, I haven't had the number exactly in my mind, but our IT provider did provide us the cost of the new versus the refurbished. I want to say it was about $2,000 more for the new, don't quote me, a little more than that anyway, it was in that neighborhood of 2,000 something. So, and, and it was his recommendation on this, because he said that, he is interested in me in lay terms, that, you know, we're buying exactly the same thing, and he has to maintain it, and this is also a backup server, not our primary, so...
And, and my experience has been, for we have six, I believe, that we bought three years ago, that some kids actually said that the refurbished, as far as our industry goes, worked just fine, and we've never had any issues so far, so...
And how much is left in contingency after this, Misty?
I'm sorry, I don't have that exact number for you, but I think it's around 14,000, 14.7.
So, we got eight months and $14,000 in contingency left. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, so you have a motion in front of you and seconded to accept the quote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Melanie, did you vote?
No. Aye. Go ahead and vote, yes.
All right, the motion passes. New business, item I. Possible motion discussion to approve travel training request from Police Chief Jen Wenscott.
Make a motion to accept travel training request for Chief, Police Chief Jen Wenscott to attend a TASER instructor training program in here in South Dakota on 5/22.
Second. Discussion.
Will we be able to, once she goes through this, because it says TASER instructor training, she will be able to do these trainings here at home or in town?
Yes, that's what the training request says, that she'll be able to see other officers and recertify them.
That's, to me, a smarter move.
And council members can actually be the victim?
No. No. I done went through once.
I don't like paying.
No.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item J. A possible motion discussion to approve travel training request from Police Department School Resource Officer.
Make a motion to approve the travel training request for Police Department School Resource Officer Thomas McMillan to attend the child maltreatment investigation, minimal facts, and beyond training in Watertown, South Dakota on April 5th, 2022.
Second.
Discussion.
So, he's already been to this training?
There, there's an explanation in here.
Yeah, that explanation.
So, on the backside of the request form, this was scheduled spur of the moment due to a canceled trial in court, he had, that he had originally thought he could not attend this, but then when the court was canceled, this was scheduled out.
At that day?
At that time.
So, yeah, we don't typically do it after the fact, but because of those expedited circumstances this time and the value of that training program thing.
There was no penmanship classes along with the...
Well, you know, it kind of reminds me that maybe we should name him Dr. McMillan?
They probably all signed that one. I feel sorry for their AA. Who did the second on that, I'm sorry?
Dave.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
May I make a comment, Mayor?
Yes.
I've been talking to some parents and some school board members, and they're very, very happy with Thomas McMillan. So, Captain, you guys did a great job and you're hired, let's maintain that. It's imperative that we have a good officer there, and I appreciate your efforts in getting a good man in there.
New business, item L. Possible motion...
K.
I already got K checked off.
It's not K.
Possible motion discussion to approve travel training request from Library Clerk.
I make a motion to approve travel training request from Library Clerk Mary Hayes and Heather Lee to attend the Black Hills Area Librarians Conference in Rapid City on April 25th, 2022.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business, item L. Possible motion discussion to approve travel training request from City Administrator Jeff Temple.
Make the motion to approve travel training request from City Administrator Jeff Temple to attend the Great Open Spaces City Management Association, that sounds like a drinking thing right there. G O S C M A State Conference and Spearfish, now I know it is, May 24th, 23 to 27th at 2022.
Second.
Discussion.
Sorry, I don't drink anymore, Jim. You don't drink any less either?
That's right. Now, the first agenda item is nine round, or nine-hole round of golf.
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Call us when you hit the 19th hole.
New business, item M. Possible motion discussion to approve travel training request from Finance Officer.
I make a motion to approve the travel training request from Finance Officer Misty Summers-Walden and Utility Billing Admin Assistant Barb Benson to attend the Government Human Resource Association and Finance Officer Association School in here on South Dakota, 6622 through 61022.
Second.
Discussion.
That's where you should be.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. On to committee reports. Administrative Finance, JR, Melanie?
Admin and Finance, met today at 1:00 here at the Mueller Civic Center. In attendance were Mayor Bob Nelson, Finance Officer Misty Summers-Walden, Seat Administrator Jeff Temple, Councilwoman Deborah Johnston, Co-Chair Melanie Wilson, and Chair JR Huddleston. Old Business, Fall River Highway Fuel System Repairs in Agreement, awaiting new CA and PD chief. Jeff will look into the matter. ARPA 633,00322. Item A, BHCOLG, standard revenue loss, cover salaries and wages. Committee recommends revenue loss to cover the salary and wages. Misty, did I read that right? Okay. Water, wastewater, water infrastructure improvements, wastewater 225,000, digester lid, wastewater 100,000, clarifier arm, and water 400,000, additional water line needed from Dale's Family Restaurant to Minnacata. Committee has expectations the ARPA funds will be used for these. Salary and wages, review $1 an hour impacts, committee reviewed and discussed. Item B, possibility to increase longevity percentage from 0.5% to 1%. Committee recommends to table until new council is in place. Possibility to increase part-time return bonus from 0.25 cents to 0.50 cents, extended years, no limit. Committee recommends to table until new council is in place. Prepare for and participate in another wage study after the road projects. Committee recommends to table until the new council is in place. Ask the SDML ideas for help. Can salary survey be downloaded and reports shared? Committee recommends to table until new council is in place. New Business, review monthly finance reports submitted last meeting, and Misty provided us today with an un-audited report. Committee member items. We discussed the suspended sidewalk naming, no recommendations forward, discussed on on-call pay, no change in policy is written. Outdoor recreation grant request to the South Dakota Land and Water Conservation Fund for a 50% matchy grant for upgrades and fencing for Butler Park. Maximum city obligation would be 100,000 after South Dakota Land and Water Conservation Fund reimbursement, tabled and added to budget hearing discussions. PD Homeland Security Grant for five mobile computers. Initial cost estimates all paid by Homeland Security Grant, $64,000. Ongoing added expense, $5,800 estimate. Recommended approval by council upon review of grant documents. Review request from Golf Operations Manager to change point-of-sale software at Southern Hills Golf Course from Golf Now, currently in middle of second-year contract, to light-speed payments, recommended and approved by council tonight. Considered proposal to allow on premises, on premises alcohol sales at Southern Hills Golf Course, that was removed from discussion. Considered requirement that items presented to council be titled, authored, and dated. Committee recommends that items presented to the council will be titled, authored, and dated. Discuss the six-month probationary period and potential limiting significant policy or procedural changes during this time. Discuss and we'll manage that internally. IT provider review, are we satisfied with the current provider? It was discussed with no action recommended. Meeting adjourned at 3:25 PM. Next meeting is May 2nd at 1:00 PM here at the Mueller Center.
Melanie? Had anything?
Nope.
Counsel, any questions?
I do. On that sidewalk, Mr. Mueller's the one that drew the original sidewalk for that back in the 50s, 60s. Be the person to name it after. Just my idea.
I think we discussed that we will probably go out to the public and ask for public comment, and see if we can get some good ideas for, for naming. I brought it up, I would like to see my preference, that it be a veteran walkway or a veteran suspended sidewalk, in conjunction with the Freedom Trail that's across from that, in conjunction with the town being the Veterans Town. I just thought it would be a good added idea for that, but we're contemplating putting it out for public comment.
I threw out an idea of maybe calling it Warrior's Way, instead of Warriors Way. We have our warriors here in town, all over town, so just something a little bit different than veteran everything. But, yeah, I think it would be a neat competition, or contest to have the community input for a naming.
Might be surprised at the comments you get.
Well, they want to have input, here would be a place to have it.
Any other questions? Bill, when it comes to the police computers, am I correct that Frank Maynard said that they've been 100% approved by Homeland?
The, the initial recommendation went through, and that pretty much, that, that typically, if it goes through the first approval phase, it, that usually settles it, but it still has to be, the paperwork has to be finalized. So, it's not a totally done deal yet, but it's pretty close.
Okay. Thank you. Airport Advisory, Bill?
Hey, Airport Advisory Committee met on Thursday, April 7th at 8:30 AM at the airport. Members present were Shane Miller and Petra Wilson. Employees present were Jeff Temple and Tracy Bastian. Elected officials were myself, Melanie, and Mayor Nelson, and guests were Mark Boxbaum. Did I get your name right, Mark? Thank you. We had no communications from the public under Old Business. We discussed the family fun day, just still in the planning process on that. Regarding... Regarding the tea hanger project, the the survey of the site has started. Under new business, our March fuel sales were 636 gallons. We had an estimated 39 flight operations and 12 balloon flights. Under maintenance, we're identifying and repairing prairie dog holes in the grass runway. Items from the members, we discussed airport closures versus just issuing a notum for snow events. Tracy took an action to discuss the issue with the airport manager and adjust the notums as appropriate. Letters have been sent out to private hangar owners regarding the annual F A A required resident aircraft review. That's important because the number of resident aircraft we have at the airport determine what our, how much federal funding we get each year. Our next meeting will be Thursday, May 5th, 8:30 at the airport, and we adjourned at 9:10 AM.
Any questions for Bill? Thank you, Bill. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Larry?
Next meeting will be May 12, 7:00, 8:00 PM at the Mueller Center. Everybody's invited.
Thank you. Historic preservation, Deborah?
They met April 6th here at Mueller Center at 5:00 PM. Present were Steve Wiener, Scott Sogi, Brian Crawford, Pat Like, Mike Summer, myself, and Kara Hagan. Guests were Mayor Nelson, Pat Weiss, Brett Gordon, and Maria March. Under old business, the window dressing project on 145 South Chicago, Sarah Bechtam is waiting to meet with Marty Malenki for further plans with that. The window dressing at 609 and 611 North River Street, which is the bodega building, the facade is to get a power wash and repainting of the same color. One new awning has been found and they're looking for the second one to replace. The high school is building shadow boxes for the windows so that there can be displays put in them. And there was to be a newspaper story, which apparently did show up this week in the Fall River Herald Star, so that's what's going on with these window dressings. Also at 609 611 North River, Scott's update states the property title transfer is in progress process. The owner that can acquire, the owner then can acquire a certificate of insurance. The status of the previous building permit was not known. At 243 North River Street, engineering reports, this is the building to the right of City Hall, that report is complete stating the building is sound and in no danger of the road project. Motion was made by Mike for city attorney to draft a letter listing the top five concerns based on the report and to send those to Mr. Johnson for his action. The ordinances revision process, motion was made by Pat stating that the members of the Historic Preservation Commission are also members of the Historic District District Commission, and that was approved. The verbiage from section 32.06, quote, "and shall be residents of the city shall be removed." It was discussed to insert a map showing the historic district boundaries at the end of the document instead of in the body, and the legal descriptions of the property within the district all shall also be at the end of the document. Under new business at 705 North River, the Misty River Tavern signage changes are to include replacing the Bourbon County panels on both sides and replace with the Misty River Tavern. At 445 North River, Southern Hills Mercantile, that's the old Pistol Patty Building, is going to have a custom paint on the exterior of the 1967 edition, installing black cloth awnings over those windows and install exterior lighting, and that was approved. At 741 Jennings Avenue, Body Count Tattoo will be installing new windows and doors that will remain black. The transoms above the entry doors will be removed and the glass tint will be the same as what is currently there. Discussion items, I S G Company is quoting the wayfinding signage for the road project. The Historic Preservation Commission is looking for a historical looking option for our downtown. Meeting adjourned at 6:15. The next one will be May 4th, a Wednesday at 5 o'clock here at the Mueller Center.
Any questions for Deborah?
I got a question. Can the city have our lawyer, Delos Johnson, people out there trying to fix five things in that building? Isn't up to the city to tell them they have to fix them?
It goes to the point of the demolition by neglect that we're trying to prove, I believe, is the road we're trying to take all the steps to make sure that the building is kept up. So there is a long list of things that needed to be done to the building.
Can't you tell them they got to fix them?
It's in violation of the ordinance.
Is it?
Those broken windows up above?
Well, I agree with that.
Yeah.
The the list that Deborah was talking about, Historic Preservation will provide the list of items that they want Garland to drop the letter around to let the owner of the property know that they are in violation of city ordinance. And as Deborah said, it's demolition by neglect, and we have got to step up and do something as a city to let these property owners know of our historic properties, that they have a responsibility to maintain them and not just let them turn into another West Oak.
Oh, I don't want it tore down either. I'm just asking a question.
Yep.
Is the engineer's report you referenced, was that the one done and provided by the Department of Transportation?
No, this was the one done by Scott. There was five people that went in, Scott, the police, Lance, the engineer that owns the bodega building. He's a structural engineer.
Did we pay for that report?
No.
Okay.
No. It's the the one that the the court allowed the city of Hot Springs to enter private property to do an inspection of it, make sure they know what condition it was in.
And the Historic Preservation people were there also. Anything else?
Who, the city pays a lawyer to draft this letter up and send to them?
Yes.
And we didn't pay for the engineer's report, or we will?
I don't think we've seen a bill.
We didn't, and it's my understanding he's not billing us.
Oh, okay.
Will everyone be provided a copy of their report? Or is it informal?
I wouldn't say it's an informal report. Scott has it. I don't know why.
I have it. I can email it.
So this report is the final say-so once they start working on the road in front of the building? Because I know you referenced D O T, somebody referenced D O T. There's, we're confusing two things here. One-
Yeah, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, one is the inspection that we did by court order of the building to verify that it was not falling apart. Second issue is, right now, they're trying to gain access, the D O T respect company is trying to gain access to that building and hasn't been able to do so in order to verify that the damage will not happen, that it won't be damaged from the road construction. So that's two separate issues. Right now, he's not letting out, my understanding is, he's not allowing them in the building to do the, set up the testing.
The vibration testing.
Yeah, so.
The Fowler-Crumbradur building was one of the specific sandstone buildings that the state is, you know, monitoring to make sure that nothing significant happens to it during the reconstruction.
But that building wasn't part of the original seismic testing?
It's supposed to be, they're just having trouble gaining access.
But, because we did one already for their base, so this one?
No, I don't think they got in for that initial one either. They did other buildings along the street, but not that one.
So the initial testing that the state did was all along North River Street.
Right.
They didn't go into buildings. They tested external, the monitors, and set up that baseline normal vibration that, you know, is seen by trucks and everything moving through the community. But now they're actually wanting to put the seismic graphs internal to the building so they know what specifically is happening to the building.
Well, that's kind of funny because I let them into Morning Sunshine and they put their equipment inside.
Yeah, the city has to took pictures upstairs, downstairs, all around.
If the owner doesn't allow them to do so, then they're issued, the owner issued a letter stating they assume full responsibility.
So when did you do this, prior, a year ago?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
That's the only reason why I was asking whether or not they were part of that program because I know four buildings all in a row, including the one that I was managing, was part of that.
Okay.
And the reason I was asking for their report is I'm often asked to provide, in the future, somebody will say, can I have a copy of that request for proposal? Can I have a copy of that report that was discussed?
I sent it to Carrie with the minutes, she questioned what she should do with it, and so I guess she should give it to you.
I asked for it.
Okay.
About?
I'm still, well, she said in the report, the engineer said it's structural, no, no, it isn't going to fall down.
Structurally sound, yeah.
Structurally sound, yeah.
It doesn't mean it's in perfect condition, there's things that could be improved. There's a whole list of them.
I guess I'll have to come look at the report myself.
Let's see if I can-
What it comes down to it is, the report is saying at this point in this state that the building is in, it is actually-
Sound.
-sound. But that's the point that it is right now.
Thank you, Deborah.
Mm-hmm.
Evans Plunge Advisory, Linda?
Okay, the Evans Plunge met on April 14th, 2022, at noon at the, at the plunge. Present were myself, committee members Chris Hansen, Kathy Wren, Okoya Zimiga, Troy Lurs, Tom Nas, Allison Ritterbush, Mara Smith, Barry McNair, and we had a guest, Ben Kramer. We discussed the closure review and the hours update, and attached to my report is a list of items that were completed during the two-week closure, and there is still an issue with the wiring electrical of the HVAC system that will be addressed. And they are not projecting being open on Tuesdays at this time. We had an update on the Hot Springs High School collaboration on training and classes. Troy deferred to Ben Kramer on this one. This program will offer a different option to the P E classes, expose students to swimming and safety benefiting both parties. The plan is to block out a two-period time at the end of their school day, scheduling to allow school to transport students to and from the plunge. Contract dollars are being looked at with the school board. Kathy Wren has agreed to volunteer as her schedule allows. Okoya will train students under Mr. Kramer's teaching certificate, and the school will be putting together a curriculum and also looking at insurance. It was suggested that the plunge should offer a fee reduction for students in sports. Swim lessons, Kathy Wren just finished on April 14th, and summer rec starts on May 31st, which is a Tuesday. There was a review of monthly saves from Okoya, and no saves since the last meeting in February. We discussed gift shop books. A local person has come forward asking if his books can be sold in the gift shop. After much discussion, it was determined that books do not sell very well, and the committee decided not to introduce them into the gift shop. And then I continued with an open communication forum from the committee. They all agreed that the steam room is phenomenal and was a major consensus there. And the plunge will host, or did host, a Hot Springs residents swim free day with their I D on April 15th. The next meeting will be May 12th, 2022, noon at the Evans Plunge, and we adjourned at 1:00.
Any questions for Linda?
Yeah, I got one.
Okay.
Go ahead. No, you go ahead.
Draw straws?
I, I think if we're going to give kids in Hot Springs a special rate, it should be everybody, not just athletes.
That what?
It should be every kid in Hot Springs, not just because they're an athlete.
Oh, okay.
That's my opinion.
Well, I think it was suggested to use it as like a cool-down right after their sports, like the track team just run in there and cool down afterwards is the reason why it was suggested.
I just told you what I think.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
It's not related then to the P E classes that you were discussing?
This part is not.
Okay, okay, I thought-
This is separate.
I'm glad you asked that follow-up question because I was thinking a fee reduction for the classes, and I was like, is that a fee reduction?
No.
Okay, thank you.
And in reference to those classes, when I was on the plunge committee, there's a lot of times they're trying to get these things started with the school. Is this going to go through, or is it going to go the way of every other program they tried to get together and it fell apart? What is going on down there?
Well, I think Troy has worked on getting it started up really good, and, but he's leaving the end of the school year in the end of May, and I'm just hoping that things will continue with it if, if they want this to, to go. And it kind of sounds like the P E instructor, Ben Kramer, is going to be taking this over and trying to get the curriculum going on it and, and the credits needed for the students.
Because I know that last year, correct me, Misty, we'd hired some, an aides aquatic director or something other, and then that person, after a couple of months, left, and now we're back to doing the same thing again, so what's going on?
We have a new one. We did replace them, that's Okoya that she mentioned-
Yes.
-who would help teach under, it sounds like Ben's certificate.
Right.
And I would say that new programs, both at the city and at the school, are difficult to implement, so it's just a lot of discussion. I think the hope still sounds like from both parties that we get there, but you're still working on it.
Right.
Would that be a true statement?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Linda.
You're welcome.
Parks Recreation, Larry?
Okay, here we go. Meeting started at 2:00 PM. The mayor, city administrator, two older women, Barville Johnson, myself, Bart Laurie, Kathy Martin, Gerald, two members from the public were present. Public comment, subject of seasonal drought, looking for to find seasonal workers from college or high school to water trees in the park, need a C D L drive license to drive the trucks. Lights and signage, use of automatic locks to stop illegal use of the courts from skateboards, bikes, et cetera, I think deer were mentioned. The timers have been fixed and reset. In the cemetery update, the cemetery now has a new mower, will turn on the water when the weather gets warmer. On the rec update, half over with spring activities, working on summer rec. Registration starts week of April 26th. In the park update, some vandalism over the winter, the tee-ball field is flagged out, the bathroom blocks, my understanding, will be passed on to the park personnel for opening in the mornings, police will lock in the evenings per mayor's suggestion. Am I right in remembering that?
Yes.
Okay. Will try to find grants for fence upgrades, a request for bathroom on Lower Chautauqua and cost of. Discussion of parking for activities at Chautauqua and find a solution to stop cars parking on grass at Lower Chautauqua and sometimes on Upper. At Centennial Park- At Centennial Park, indoor, outdoor, grass like will be used, staked down like astroturf. Ramp staying on depending on corps' decision. Fountain at Centennial Park needs to be redesigned. Mayor suggests going back to the original design. Chautauqua Playground, August 26th, 2022, start date will be possible, possibly be done by October. Laurie will talk to Playground Company for the need of a representative to help put the playground set together. Cost for rep will be checked on. The Brookside Shelter, we had that, but just going to be starting this. Jeff, it'll be starting like this Friday and Saturday, hopefully be completed in that timeframe. We still need to find out what's going to happen with the electrician on that. Dogs in Butler Park are an issue. Dogs off leash and owners not cleaning up after the dogs. Dog park reports, still raising money for fence. And meeting adjourned at 3:14 PM. Next meeting will be May the 4th at 2:00 PM at the Mueller Center. Public is invited.
Any questions for Larry? Sorry.
When we put that playground equipment, that parked down.
School Street, schools?
Yeah, no.
No.
Brookside?
Brookside, Brookside, yeah.
They sent a rep down there and it didn't cost any extra.
And I thought we talked about that and we're told that with this donation as well, that it was provided. The rep was provided to help make sure we send enough.
I think that's the reason Laurie's going to check into it because there was a price that was quoted as a representative coming at 2,400. Or am I, oh, that's for two reps. But she's going to, Laurie's going to look into that and find out what's going on with it.
Yeah, because was this the same company that did the Brookside Park one? Or is this a different company?
I don't know. I didn't, I don't know what company they used.
I don't think.
But it was Wes and I that put most of it together.
And that was the question that we asked Laurie to follow up on. Is it the same company?
Yeah.
And if it is, based on your recollection and Wes's, that the company came out at no charge, why are they now looking to charges to help set this one up?
Bart said that the rep being there was really necessary. Made it go a lot faster than it would have if they hadn't have had one.
Bart wasn't there, so I don't know why he said that.
He was at the meeting.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you, Laurie.
You're welcome.
Planning and zoning, Debra?
We meet tomorrow evening, April 20th, at 7:00 at City Hall.
Thank you. Public Safety, Bill, JR?
Okay, Public Safety met on Thursday, March 3rd, 2:00 PM here at the Mueller Center. We did have a quorum with all city council members present as well as the mayor. In addition to the council and the mayor, Chief Winscott was present. Safety Coordinator Laurie Sherard, City Administrator Jeff Temple, Fall River Emergency Manager Frank Maynard, and Fire Chief Darkoy were present. We added two items to the published agenda. One, individual council member opinion regarding cultivation of medical cannabis and an update and comments from Fire Chief Darkoy. There were no members of the public present and therefore no comments regarding council members' opinions regarding cultivation of medical cannabis. The group that is applying for a medical cannabis dispensary license had requested to discuss cultivation of medical cannabis within the city limits with the Public Safety Committee. And they wanted to get an understanding of how the council felt on the matter. A notice of quorum was issued for this Public Safety Committee meeting. And all members were invited to attend in order to express their personal opinions on the matter. City Hall was notified on April 4th that the group wished to withdraw their item from the agenda as they had decided not to pursue cannabis cultivation inside the city, but would find a location within the unincorporated areas of the county. It was felt that it was still important for each council member to share their opinion on the cannabis cultivation within the city limits, so the members were invited to attend since a notice of quorum had been issued. Each member provided their opinion on the matter, shared various reasons and share various reasons or concern or support. After nearly 90 minutes of discussion, a non-binding informal poll of the members indicated that more than two-thirds of the members were against changing the ordinances at this time to allow cultivation within the city. Mayor Nelson indicated that because of the number of council members opposing a change, he would not support adding an agenda item to a future council meeting asking for a change to the ordinances governing medical cannabis. We did receive an update from Chief, Fire Chief Darkoy. There's currently 43 firefighters on the rolls with the Hot Springs Volunteer Fire Department. And he discussed the staffing challenges that's facing not only his department, but the fire service in general. We received an update from Chief Winscott. The added stop sign at Jennings Avenue and River Street seems to be helping the traffic flow. We've already talked about the 2022 vehicle being canceled. At that, at the time of the meeting, we had not received any new applicants for the open officer positions. But I believe Captain Shively reported tonight that we have received some new applicants. We've also received three applications for the reserve officer positions that are open. And as was also stated by Councilman Huddleston tonight, that the chief is getting a lot of good reports regarding our school resource officer. Officer Engel is scheduled to graduate from the academy on June 3rd. And in March, the police department responded to 499 calls. Under old business, we have an old agenda item of a stop sign had been requested at to be installed on 18th Street at Detroit Avenue. After discussion and reviewing the area, it was determined that this was not needed. Frank Maynard discussed National Incident Management System and Incident Command System training for elected officials. This is ICS 402 training. It's a four-hour instructor-led course. And it will be scheduled sometime in July or August. And it'll have, we'll go ahead and invite Fall River County as well as Edgemont and finance officer positions.
Sounds fun.
It is. We'd been talking some time back to do a citywide traffic control sign study. But given staffing levels and workload, we're putting that on hold for now. We talked some more about the house number updates. And we're going to look at identifying, maybe using, contacting the scouts to do a survey on what locations need to be, have house numbers. Provided an update on whether or not we could use speed cameras to issue citations. In order to do that, we did have an opinion from our city attorney. To actually issue a citation, we need a picture of the license plate and the driver. The company I was looking at, their equipment takes pictures from the rear of the car. And plus, the quality of the photo doesn't get inside. So for a little while, I'll continue to look at other equipment that takes pictures from the front and actually has a good enough quality that we can identify a driver. We'll chase that for a while before we either declare victory or drop it. The committee was informed by the mayor that there had been a meeting between the owners of the Skyline Motel and city officials and that that meeting went well. And information will be provided to them as as is legally possible. There was no update on the fuels reduction grant. Under new business, a member of the public had requested a stop sign be installed at Jennings, on 23rd Street at Jennings Avenue, specifically during the highway reconstruction period. After additional discussion with that member of the public, the concern was to try to slow people down. In reviewing the manual on uniform traffic control devices, we are not allowed to use stop and yield signs to control speed. So we're not, we're not going to pursue a stop sign at that location. We talked about a four-way stop at School Road and Evergreen Cemetery. The recommendation is to install a stop sign on the School Street at the Simon Quarry exit, and then again at School Street at Coldbrook. There was a request for a 10-minute parking zone in front of City Hall for folks to drop off their utility payments. Put that in south of the fire hydrant. Our city administrator has checked with South Dakota DOT and this, what this particular application would be allowed. So we'll go ahead and pursue that. The outdated, we got a report that there were some outdated signs in the city parks regarding the ACO and ordinances. And those signs have been reviewed and will continue to be reviewed and make sure they're appropriate. And if there's some old ordinance numbers or old phone numbers, we'll get those taken down. We talked about the Fall River Bridge sidewalks, the suspended sidewalks and other potential slick surface management. And the street department will adjust their process to manage ice that forms as a result of steam off the river. And there was a request to change the no outlet sign on Walnut Street to a dead end sign to prevent inadvertent traffic, and that was agreed upon. The meeting adjourned at 4:00 PM. And our next meeting will be Thursday, May 5th, 2:00 PM here at the Mueller Center.
Did you say we're replacing a no outlet sign with a dead end sign?
Yes.
Because people don't understand that they're the same thing?
Yes.
Ears are fine?
Ears are fine.
Yep, that falls in line with getting the Mueller Center's address right.
Yes. That wasn't even nice.
Parking restriction sign is allowed in front of City Hall, but not allowed in front of private businesses? We were requested to do that until the DOT wouldn't allow us. There's a difference between the requests?
That was asked.
We asked a question. Well, we asked a question of mine ourselves. I can't tell you why they approved one and not the other.
I think we haven't.
Weren't those for the businesses? They wanted just restricted to their parking only?
One, two-hour parking.
Well, I thought it was 30 minutes, but in the amount of time.
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know.
Yeah, that's, that's why we asked the question because of that previous answer. Or because we've asked DOT before. And we're not allowed to control parking on a, on a state highway.
And not only they approved the temporary, but they also approved us to put it back in, in the new configuration after president. So I don't understand.
Yeah, Mick.
To the, to the question, I think we need to be prepared to figure out how we're going to respond when other businesses are saying, if you can do it, why can't we? JR, do you have anything you want to add?
Nope. He did fine. Nice job, Bill.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I didn't get the next meeting date, I'm sorry.
After that one, I don't know that I want. May 5th, Thursday, 2:00 PM, Mueller Center.
We don't either.
Hey, my airport report was short. I had to make up. You average the two together, they're just fine.
Public Works, Dave, Craig?
Public Works met April 12th at Mueller Center at 1:00 PM. Those in attendance was Shelley Brown, Mayor Bob Nelson, Craig Romi, myself, Tracy Bastian, Billy Morrow, Scott Sogi, Deb Johnston, and Jeff Temple. The first conversation was on bump outs with Ms. Shelley Brown and kind of representative of the Keep Hot Springs Beautiful and I guess other smaller groups. But anyway, we were talking about the bump outs. We, as a committee, really encouraged them to go ahead and start setting up their plans, their diagrams and so on and so forth. And also bring to us some of the information on, on the tree, on trees, different bloom, blooming patterns and stuff like this. So we can kind of figure out what they're going to need as far as water, fertilizer and stuff like that. Kind of overall, get an overall view of what, what they're planning. But we did encourage them to keep, keep on planning because this is the time. This is the time to get that done. Street maintenance, trimming of trees in the alleys, that's an ongoing thing when we have the labor and the time. Beans, we do have a road project. They are kind of shorthanded also. So we are in different ways helping the street project with, with our people. Update on Valley View drainage improvement, schedule and cost of materials. We're waiting, we, Billy got some, I can't remember the town, was it Rapid?
We got some culverts from the state.
Oh, it was the state, okay. As, as they're rebuilding and placing their new ones, where they're also repairing any of the grates that we're getting from them. So we won't have to mess with them in-house. But that is a slow-moving, ongoing thing. Road project updates, we're kind of waiting on that as of that day. I'm sure they've got their, their ducks in a row. Code enforcement. We have food truck park, parking signs are being discussed. And lot pins have been set up so they know exactly where their spots are as they rent them for the vendors. Old business, Battle Mountain Road needs billings and that's scheduled for June. Again, that is also something that you have to take consideration on time and labor. We're still pretty much have our snow removal contract. That's pretty much done. You guys should have seen it in your, your information packet.
We keep calling it a contract, but to clarify, it's a change to an existing ordinance, right?
Yeah, it's just an addition. Excuse my verbiage. No, I.
Clarify.
Yep. You are correct. Let's see, what else? Summit Road, that is actually right behind a food truck, a park. We're looking at part of that hill and wall needs to be repaired. We're looking at getting costs. And there again, we run into the same thing as far as time and labor. See. Clubhouse retaining, we discussed that earlier. We should be good to go. And our next meeting will be?
26th.
The 26th of April at 1:00 PM here at the Mueller. And anybody that is interested, please come. We could always have an extra hour for conversation and discussion.
Craig, do you want to add anything?
And to back up a little bit, we've got our totes in that was ordered. And on Valley View, we're not getting grates. We still have to make those. We got the culverts from the drainage culverts that state's putting in. We got the old ones.
Yep.
So they can put them on Valley View Road.
Right.
Instead of using old ones. They're old, but they're in good shape.
Anything else?
That.
Any questions for Dave or Craig? The food vendor park, Jeff, we were taking applications until yesterday?
Right, until Friday and then. Right, until Friday, and then Friday was the last day, so we've had one, we've only had one applicant this year, and that person is already in there and has been, is now operational, so. We've had some other inquiries, so we may get more before summer, but at least we've, we've identified, from this point forward, that first come, first served. We didn't know.
Daily, weekly, monthly, right?
Yes, daily, weekly, monthly. So, anyway, yes.
And we have four spots available?
Four spots in that, in the park, yes.
Okay. So for anybody in the public that would like to have a mobile food vendor spot, apply to City Hall, we've got three available. It'd be nice to have a food park down there with different offerings as we get into the summer vacation season. If you're interested, let City Hall know. Thank you, gentlemen. Southern Hills Golf Course, Jeff?
And ladies. He said, "Thank you, gentlemen." I said, "And ladies."
I thought you were denying the gentleman. The golf course advisory board met on the eleventh of April at the Golf Course Pro Shop. The president was myself and both the grounds manager, Jason, and PJ, the operations manager. Committee members, Kathy Ballmer, Don Allseth, Gail Sprentall, Gillette Miller, and then we also had Tracy Bastian there to brief on the, on the wall. The meeting discussed a number of things, but, and most of those we talked about, not already, but I will address, first of all, real quick, the Clubhouse Foundation repair. The committee that that advisory board did compare with the design that was before. And one thing that we didn't talk about here, and I wanted to mention, is that that rock wall is a ready rock construction with, in a sandstone color, so it actually looks like, oh, it looks like original sandstone building, but I mean, it's the same, same color, same, same type, look, same look. The rounds played today for four ninety-three compared to three seventy for the same time last year, so PJ is already ahead of the game. No point intended. POS system, we've talked about. We will talk later about, once the POS, POS system is in place, we will talk about something. I'll let PJ go into it later on, with a, we call dynamic pricing, which basically allows an algorithm to decide which hours of the day are more expensive or cheaper or whatever. I won't go into it now, I just plant the seed, let you know that once, that once PJ has his POS in place, we'll, we'll look at that and see how it fits into our, our fee authorization ordinance. That's about it there. The next meeting is May sixteenth, 6:00 PM at the Clubhouse. It is a week late because of some conflict, so that's an out-of-cycle, out-of-cycle meeting. And that's all I've got, so submit questions.
Any questions for Jeff?
Please let Mary know, who maintains that calendar and sends it out of that off-cycle meeting. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
Misty, finance officer report.
Oh, he still gets the city administrator report, doesn't he?
Oh, I get to do two in a row. I love it. See, most of the stuff on my report, we've already covered, but I'll hit them real quick. Aside from the obvious three-eighty-five road proportions, our focus has been really now on working with the enterprise, or my focus, I guess, work with the enterprise operations to ensure increased profitability and profit performance for the year. We are facing some major, and I think PJ is looking pretty good at the golf course on labor, but we are now faced with two departing lifeguards, now two departing lifeguards from this launch. So we are able, we are struggling to keep it, and that's as of, I believe, yesterday or over the weekend, anyway. So we are, we are able to keep it open the sixth day that we agreed to do, but it's nip and tuck as we go through. And we are working on some, some solutions for that. You all know, where, obviously, work is continuing on the river restoration, and most of that's done up to the Minicotta now, and working on the reconstruction piece. We've had, the crews have added a new tee ball practice field. I don't think you touched on it, Larry, at Butler Park, it's simply a practice field. It's not a full game field, and it's really for the little guys. Weather permitting, we're working to get the parks up to speed, and, and that includes the fountain, Santango Park. I think we have an inexpensive economical solution to get, get the fountain back on track, and I'll, I'll bring that to council, I hope, by the next council meeting. Other than that, the only thing we're doing, we're, the only thing, sorry, that's it. What else we're doing? We are going through a review right now of city equipment, fixtures, vehicles, in anticipation of requesting council approval of an excess property auction in sometime in the fall of this year. Just a heads up on that. We're working on putting that information together now, and that's all I've got for my.
Jeff?
Yes, sir.
We lost two more lifeguards, you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
No, two.
Two.
We lost three employees, one of, two of our lifeguards.
Yeah.
And Linda might know a little more in detail, but I do know that, and they're not, not like they walked out the door today and they give that notice. And one of them, one of them is going to another position in the city, so we're trying to negotiate and keep him over there longer, you know, that kind of thing. The other one is leaving in June, or, excuse me, he's leaving out of state in June, and we're trying to convince him to stay on until, instead of giving us, you know, short notice. That's kind of, I think, that's where we are.
Is, is he a lifeguard or front desk?
No, the front desk is also resigned, but that's not, that's a different story. There's, there's no issue with that. No, the, the, the front desk is the third person.
Okay.
And that's the, well, that's not, the point is, that's, the, the problem is, are the two lifeguards. That's, that's the challenge, always.
Miss agenda, and the other one will be on the, the agenda.
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay. All right.
When you get time, I want to talk to you, okay?
You know, I look forward to it.
Okay.
This is my lady.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Anything else for the city administrator report? Thank you, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
All right, Misty?
Well, we reviewed in Admin Finance today with some unaudited 2021 figures, so I'm working on that annual financial report to present to council, and actually, I've worked through those numbers, so Admin Finance, we've just reviewed the unaudited numbers in each, for the city. I'm working on our SF, SLFRF, recording. If you remember, we discussed, the first report is required by April 30th. Late in the game, their final, final guidance, final, final, final guidance gave us an opportunity to report using a standard revenue loss, and so I had gotten on to the site, filled out most of the information using that option, which is the easiest and recommended by, well, many in the state and also by the Black Forest Council local governments, and so we talked about that at Admin Finance, and I'll be submitting that report prior to the deadline, which is April 30th. We haven't spent any of the money yet, so we'll just be claiming that standard revenue loss, hopefully making that one of the, one of only two reports I'll have to file for that grant compliance. Myself and other employees thoroughly enjoyed the extra two days off over Easter. I was able to travel to Omaha and enjoy a four-day weekend and come back, and I'm awfully tired today, I feel like I need vacation from my vacation, but thank you for, for allowing us that, and thoroughly enjoyed. I'll be sent, I got notice, and I'll be sending out reminder that the South Dakota Municipal League is once again offering the annual budget training. They bring it to a number of locations throughout the state. We're lucky enough to have it in Rapid City on June 22nd at the Rushmore Plaza Holiday Inn. Anyone who's been to one knows that they're very beneficial. If you haven't, I encourage you to attend if you can, very timely, it's just in time for our budgeting, and it's helpful to sit around peers and others in your shoes and hear some of the concerns and processes that other communities are going through, so that you can identify why we do the things we do and be prepared for those budget meetings that we'll be scheduling soon. Thanks for approving the training for myself and Barb to attend Finance Officer School. HR is a half a day the day before, or actually, the same day, half a day the same day as the FO school starts, so it makes sense for us to go to both. I don't know if you noticed on there that I said four nights, or three, because we're still trying to decide if we want to get up at 5:00 AM and drive up there in the morning and make it a long day, or stay the night before. So I presented it to you with four, but we, we may cut it down to three just for our own personal reasons. And this happens every year, but it only really works out for me to attend every other year, because we are able to combine our election with the county, and so I'm not responsible for the election, and typically with these dates, actually present for an election, I can't attend the school. So thank you for approving Barb and I to go this year. It's been since 2017 that she and I have gone, but we try to send someone every year that it's offered, just because the breakout sessions are always different and the training's so invaluable, so thanks for approving that. This month, I feel like we're saying a lot of goodbyes. At the library, it is our library director, Peggy Exum's last day on April 29th. We had a really nice recommend, or recognition read off by the library board at our last department head meeting. I had realized how much she stepped up and what she offered. She was very passionate about our library, the years that she helped, and when we lost our director, she offered to come back to Hot Springs from where she was living in Tennessee to come and fill this gap, and so, so lucky that we had her during that time. I really hope they can find somebody to fill her shoes who cares as much and is as passionate about our library, so it's a big hard goodbye to say to her, but it was nice to hear the library board recognize what she'd done, and even being the finance officer, I realized how, how wonderful that gesture was and what it should mean to all of us that she was willing to do that. Also Kathy Gerst, we mentioned at the last one, we say goodbye to her. We have said goodbye to her. She is having a retirement party at the American Legion on Saturday, the 30th, beginning at 4:00 PM. You can RSVP at kathiesretirement22@gmail.com. It's another big goodbye after a lot of years in a position that's been instrumental to the city. It just feels like April has a lot of these really big goodbyes, so I didn't want my report to go by without recognizing them and thanking them for their years of service to the city. They'll both greatly be missed, so that's that.
Any questions for Misty? The June 22nd budget training, when's the deadline for reserving?
All right, I think it's shortly before. I don't have it in front of me. I'm gonna email it out to everybody, the notice, and that will be on there, the date will be on there.
Okay, so because it's shortly before, possibility that we'll have a turnover of one or two on council, those people would be able to?
In the past, we have made sure, right after the election, that we shared that information and invited them to the training, so we'll try to do that again. This time, we'll know after the 7th, so.
Yep, but there will be that opportunity, because the registration will be after the election.
They let us add people even after.
Okay.
Miss our RSVPs, but, and I don't know the date right off the top of my head, but even if it is before, if we have somebody that's interested in attending, we'll try to get them in.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to defer the mayor's report. We still have an executive session that we need to go into. Don't know how long it will be. So we amended the agenda. If I could get a motion to go into executive session?
I make a motion that we go into executive session.
Second.
In accordance with codified law one dash twenty-five dash two dash three, legal.
Second.
See, that's why I think we should have more executive sessions. You're anxious to get there. You can't even read the motion.
I'm ready for a nap. I mean, I'm ready to discuss this.
All right, so, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So the motion passes. There will be no business after the executive session. Jeff, Misty, and Garland, we'll need to ask you to, to join us.
Looks like about 10:01. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn. Second. Second.
We didn't have a mayor's report?
No.
No, we forewent, because we had to go into executive.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, aye, aye.
Have a good evening.